You don't often see politicians on bikes, except for when it comes to the Dutch, or for seemingly everywhere else in the world, rare exceptions, or just for PR stunts.
So that was fun. I almost lost myself.
But today, we're riding along in downtown London, Ontario, Canada with City Councillor David Ferreira.
Hi, I'm Dave Ferreira, City Council, War 13 City of London. And today, I'm going to be riding with Ben Durham.
Unfortunately for him.
Unfortunately for me, I'm going to be riding with Ben Durham on the TVP showing the connections of London and showing some of the plans that we have in the works.
I've filmed a lot of these types of ride-along videos by bicycle over the years. And this time, I recruited backward-facing camera operation help on a Turn GSD cargo bike. More on that in just a few minutes, though. Pretty much, nothing happened to plan.
Where's Vic?
Right back there.
We passed him.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just this little bit.
Oh, I didn't even notice that.
It's a cargo bike.
Hold on, I gotta learn how to use this. I think my power just went off.
But we got some good chats in, and you'll get several sneak peeks into the mind of one of our city councillors. These types of ride-alongs are important for city staff, urban planners, elected officials, and honestly, pretty much, anyone and everyone to do. But especially those who are involved, even remotely, in planning, approving, designing, or implementing anything in cities, towns, or municipalities in general. Because everything is connected to everything else when it comes to city design and how people choose to move around their cities and lives. Like, if you spend your time using one mode of transportation, often driving a car, then how do you make the right decisions? If you have never gotten around outside of a car, how do you find out how bad bicycle infrastructure makes you feel? Deep down in your bones, without first experiencing it? The answer is, hop on a bike. So let's go do that.
We have stopped by the cafe to borrow some bicycles for this ride, so thank you very much.
Thank you to the London Bike Cafe for providing these fabulous gazelles for us to use. Thank you to Andrew and staff and being so helpful and setting us up.
Awesome. Okay, let's get riding.
Yeah.
So, from a technical perspective here, we have some entertainment value. Okay, now that I'm on camera here, so we, this is the setup we have.
No one take a picture of.
We have the Turn GSD up there. It's a cargo bike.
Hold on, I gotta learn how to use this. I think my power just went off. Alright, I'm ready.
If you feel comfortable doing this, you'll be turning left. Oh, wait, no, that bike lane's closed. Really?
Is it?
Oh, the construction?
Okay, yeah, yeah, go to Talbot.
Talbot. Okay. You want to talk different routes when biking? Like, something gets closed down like that. Do you happen to know, like, the considerations that the city gives?
Well, usually when they get closed down like that, it's consideration is done because of construction and staging, and for whatever reason, they have to close it down. Usually, when we have any type of project that's going on, there are public notices that go out with alternative routes that they provide that are available. You do have to find those notices. I usually put them out on my social media and on my newsletters to tell you what the alternative routes will be. But we just will basically flag those routes and we'll give little detour signs. Like, this is a great example, actually. You'll see this little detour sign. It's facing our way, but that will show you where the alternate route is supposed to be.
Yeah, in this case, we're doing literally what's, what we're supposed to do.
Yeah, exactly. We're doing exactly what we're supposed to do. And we're going to follow the alternate route on Talbot here, and then we're going to go on to Dundas. So I've been having a lot of communication throughout the entire term with Dundas and Colburn on all sides. People walking, people driving, people biking through the area. It's, it's a newer, you know, it's a newer infrastructure addition that we put in. And it's for the protected bike lanes, just to make sure that things are protected, or people who are on their bikes are safe when they're riding. It is adjacent to the road as well, but you do have those curbs. We did put those little green pylons there, too. Just to help with some drivers who may have a line of sight issue where they can't see down where the new curbs are, because people are used to not having those there. Well, they were before when they weren't there. So there has been some adjustments, just to make sure that we have it operating in the best way possible. And you'll see that when we get there.
And so, when was the last time you were on a bike? Or do you ride down Dundas a lot? Because this is one of my routes. Awesome. I think we can make this. Go for, go for it. Definitely, probably better to do that than not.
I don't have an e-bike. I have just your regular conventional push pedal bicycle. So I ride that around as much as I can. Not really for commuting when I go to work or meetings, but more for leisure or just kind of going out and about. I do ride down Dundas. I do ride throughout downtown when I can. I like taking the TVP across the city. I got, you know, I got my family and I'm from the east end of London. So if I ever can, if I do have that time anyways, I do try to make that trip down there. But, like I said, not on an e-bike, on just your regular push pedal bike.
I guess my main route is, now we have a street sidewalk cleaner over here. But my main route is typically here. So I go Cheapside, which is now fully, it's, it's painted, it's not protected. But it does go pretty much all the way from our neighborhood up here on Heights, all the way to Colburn. Then I take Colburn down, which is all nice and protected. It's wonderful. And then we take, if I'm going anywhere in the city, typically I cut through Dundas. Or yes, as you said, like the TVP. Which, like today, I'm like, I don't want to hit any stoplights, so I specifically took the TVP.
Yeah, I like taking the TVP a lot. Like, obviously, we do have our protected bike lanes that are adjacent to traffic, and we have the Sherows, too, which I would like to be rid of. I would like more protected bike lanes around. Riding on the TVP, though, you know, like, that's, people use that, you know, obviously for commuting. But I know that a lot of people just like to go there because it's very scenic, very nice. But the way we connect those, you know, you have a lot of different off-connections from the TVP that puts you into your regular infrastructure here, especially in downtown. So there's a choice, and usually when I'm riding around downtown, I'll do a mix between both. I'll be on the TVP for a little bit. I'll be here for a little bit. I'll be in whatever bike lane I could be. And there could be some areas where you don't really have any bike infrastructure, too. And that's, that's kind of the, the area that we talk about a lot, like, how do we ensure that people who are on bikes are, you know, protected as much as they can? And it's really an infrastructure thing. How do we build up that infrastructure?
Yeah, and the connections, I think that's like the real thing there is. How do I, how would I put it? We can take the bike lane. Well, okay, we are going to not take the bike lane just yet. Oh, yeah, there we go. Well, we'll take the bike lane over here. But yeah, so like, the connections, which are the bike lanes, from one neighborhood to another. When Cheapside didn't have all of its, like, lanes done, it was very difficult for us to choose that route, and we had to figure out another way. But now there's even Wayval and so many other options in the last few years, that it just is actually, like, so nice now.
It is nice. And making sure that we have those connections that people will actually use, like, just like anybody, you know, when you're, when you're trying to go somewhere, if you're commuting from one place to the other, you are going to try to find the least amount of distance to go there, or you're going to try to find the easiest way to go there. And a lot of the ideas that we bring through when we're trying to make the connections on that, is we're just trying to foresee how will it actually be used? And to see if we can actually put a connection there for the most likely use of someone who, you know, who's going in a certain direction. And those can be, those can be identified, and we have been identifying those as we go. And those are really kind of the gist of how we expand and make those, those new connections.
That all makes sense. And so, if I were to ask you how many times you went, you've been on this bike lane on Dundas here, is there an answer to that question?
Yeah, I don't know. A few. Wouldn't be able to give you an actual number. I'm at this intersection a lot, either on foot, in my car, or on a bike, in a bus. I've been here, you know, I've pretty much grew up in London, so I've seen this, this intersection before, having friends at CCH and everything. This one has been, when we first put this in, I did get a lot of communication here about it. And primarily, you know, people who are riding, they, they like it. They like the extra protection. They like the little kidneys that we have here for that connection. When it comes to how we build our infrastructure, too, this intersection right here, Dundas and Colburn, has been a pretty good indicator for me on how we should move forward. Because in the end, you know, it's about education, educating people.
Oh, whoops. I guess we forgot to also mention we'll go up Colburn, yes?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so yeah, Colburn at Dundas. You're able to make a Dutch left, I call it, which is, yeah, the protected left. Or you can kind of join traffic. And depending on how much of a hurry I'm in, depending on traffic levels, et cetera, I kind of mix and match.
Turn here on Maitland.
Now we get in the bike box to go left, so that arrow. So, go a little, and stop.
The intersection of Colburn and Dundas is a, one that really highlights kind of how we build up the, the intersection. Because it is a high-traffic congestion point. A lot of people are using that intersection. A lot of people who are coming in from the east end of downtown do use this as a main corridor coming into the city. So I get a lot of feedback from that. And especially when people are used to the way the intersection was, and then after, how it looks after it changes and how it operates. That's really where the good feedback came through. And basically, what I'm trying to say is, just making sure that that intersection point, when we put in this new infrastructure for biking, fits in with other people who are using it. So we don't have any main contentions between the two. And that's the education piece that I'm talking about, just to show. So yeah, just, just to make sure that when we do build that out, to make sure that we don't really have, you know, people who are using vehicular traffic towards people who are using bike traffic. And we just don't pit those two types of users against each other. Some of the improvements that we made after that intersection first came through is we did end up adding those, those little green flags. They're not there right now. But those, and the reason I bring that up is because I did have some people who were driving would tell me that they hit, you know, their car wheels or their rims on the kidney bean side curbs there. So the reason we put those flags up is so people who were used to having that intersection going through there, without that new addition of the infrastructure, they would still be able to see it with their line of sight. So, you know, we're just trying to find that, that balance point, that middle ground that works for everybody, and also that doesn't, you know, have a lot of contention with it. Because the way the intersection is operating now is really good. But it did take a little bit of, of learning and adjusting to get there.
I am going to, one second, just adjust this a little bit.
Oh, I didn't even notice that.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm just in mild video mode. Oh, come on. I was also kind of going to mention the, the kitty beans being good, even, so, okay, tractor trailers, most likely. I used to actually drive a tractor trailer, so I literally had my license, yeah, AZ, and my A slash one, depending on if I was in Alberta over here.
I had a DZed.
Oh, there we go. So non-articulating, correct?
Uh, yeah, just a straight cab, forty-six hundred kilo tow, I think.
There we go. So, when we're talking about these kitty beans and not being able to navigate them in, let's say, a car or a light truck or like a pickup truck, people can do, it's, it's designed for that. However, I do know on, so Wayval, and I think this is the case, so yes, my hood is more of the, the Wayval areas. But the, the idea with that is, you are able to navigate now that they've pushed the left turn lanes back a little bit. I, I think that that was a, a design choice that needed to be made. Because, yeah, some people, when you're turning, making a wide turn, you're in the other lane suddenly. So it's actually now fine that they move the left turns.
Yeah, well, you know, just like anybody who's commuting around, you know, naturally, you try to find the quickest or the easiest way there. And, yeah, you have people who could be cutting into a lane that they shouldn't be. There could be blind spots in that situation. So just bringing that, that turn back a little bit definitely does help. There are some other options that I've seen, I think in the Netherlands, just to make sure that you have people kind of following a certain route, so they can keep the blind spots to the least amount, is having the center median jet out a little bit. So that kind of forces traffic to go around that center median, which gives a whole bunch of room for anybody on bikes or anybody who's walking through the intersection. So I, I do, I do like that.
And then, do we want to go straight here?
Yes.
On Dufferin? Okay.
How you guys doing up there? You good? How's your arms?
Getting a workout?
Let us know if you need a break.
At Colburn, let's go right. So go north, and then, once we get to Central, we'll go left, which is just down the hill.
So that's right here?
Yeah, right here.
And Central won't be too far down.
Yep. However, you'll do the Dutch left, just, unless you want to take the lane. I feel like these were principles I should have established immediately at the beginning of the bike trip.
I think we're doing pretty good.
I think so.
Like, Ben and I are really agile here on these bikes. Like, we're, we're flying in formation right now in a tight spot, no problems.
Yeah. Yeah. But the, the cargo bike that you guys are riding on, it's a little bit more unwieldy, I would call it, but like, it's, I would, I would also say it's really nimble. But when you have two people, two full-grown adults on it, it can get pretty heavy. That's like four hundred plus pounds.
Oh, I believe it.
Because of the bike itself also weighing.
And shifting body masses?
Yeah, exactly.
No, you guys are doing really good up there, I gotta say.
Yeah. Plus, like, the gimbal holding, facing backwards. Oh, my goodness. It's a lot.
So these protected bike lanes here, I think this is a great addition. I have a lot of good feedback from, from these lanes as they are. Because it does give you that, that extra protection. Like, you know, you have the curbs here. This is as best as it's going to get when you're using existing infrastructure and just expanding on that. Oh, and as you can see, we have the bike traffic lights.
What I find with these traffic lights for the bikes, I think some people are like, oh, like, why are they there? They already have a green light. I think what it does, this is actually just my interpretation, I actually even haven't, haven't researched this, but it gives permission that you're doing like the right thing.
Yeah.
It's like, hey, you can go.
It's a confidence indicator, because, you know, a lot of people who've been riding for a while, might not be used to this type of infrastructure. They might not be aware of how things work. And just to give that extra confidence for someone on the bike, like, you don't want someone to be hesitant or be worried about what they're doing or doing wrong. You want them to be focused on just being safe and navigating their way safely. So that indication light, as far as I am concerned, I call them confidence traffic lights.
So yeah, like now.
As we have right now.
This one goes, and we know to go.
Yep.
Oh, okay, actually, this is the first time that I have been on this lane here, actually. So I'm so often on Colburn and Dundas that I actually forgot about Central.
Well, Central's got a whole bunch of new infrastructure, and we're still working on some of it as well. So we added all this in the last, I think, year, in a bit, I believe. And we're still doing some work up there. We changed the entire intersection at Central and Richmond. So there was originally an aisle in there, and now there is not. So yeah, this is, this is part of the bike infrastructure program that we're doing, and it's specific for Central. And it's just connecting the east-west routes, just west of downtown, just to connect into downtown. Much-needed addition to our infrastructure.
Yes, like the Richmond one, there was something called a slip lane. I think when you were heading southbound on Rich, on Richmond, then you were going to turn onto Central, I mean, I guess, east, there was a slip lane. And I think for something that's so downtown in like Richmond Row area, I think it's, it was so important to not have that. And have you heard any complaints traffic-wise about that? Because slip lanes, I guess, do allow.
None whatsoever. That doesn't mean that some may not come, but none at this, at this point.
Yeah, because like, it can move vehicle traffic a little bit faster here and there.
It can.
But it's pretty dangerous.
Yeah. Well, I haven't heard anything yet. I'll definitely keep my eye out for it. There is some learning that we're doing. Every city, when you're trying to add this type of infrastructure, nothing is ever the same. So you can use, you know, examples from peer municipalities or, or even peer countries from outside of Canada. And we do definitely look at some of them for some inspiration. But because, you know, the actual landscape is much different, everything is unique, there is always going to be that, you know, a little bit of interpretation there. And then, just because of that, you are going to have some learning, and you are going to have some adjustments with that. So it's really a matter of kind of listening to the feedback, really hearing constituents, hearing what users are saying, and just trying to find solutions to some of the, some of the things that might be brought up. So this is all new.
I'm just checking on that squirrel. Okay.
What, what?
Oh, just a squirrel, almost got munched. I was like, no.
So yeah, this, this is a good example right here, because this was recent, so I was.
Straight, I think, right?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, we're going to go straight through. But yeah, this, right here, is glorious.
This is very nice. It's, it's new. And I was, this was, happened during my term, especially a lot of the planning for it. So I'm pretty familiar with it. And from that experience and that example, like, you know, you really get to see when you're adding this infrastructure. It's not just about adding the infrastructure. It's about a whole bunch of other things that are involved, like, you know, the trees that had to be removed there, replanting of the trees. You know, how to communicate that with the neighborhood, with people who are using it. How to make sure that we don't overcrowd the sidewalk itself, because we want to separate the two, and make sure that there's a reasonable distance for that safety. And to obviously get people away from vehicular traffic as well. So that was a very good experience for me, just kind of seeing how we do the planning and really kind of how that develops as you go through. And lots of communication with lots of business owners there as well for that part.
And I was going to ask, so as a councillor, that's, I've always considered it as a citizen, like, oh, like, we need this, blah, blah. So when you're working with businesses and residents and the staff and everyone, how does that kind of work for that intersection back there? Like, you, you said, you learnt a lot.
Yeah, I learnt a lot on what is involved in the planning and development and actual building and constructing that. And just the steps that you need to, to do that. And that's why I was bringing up like the trees, like, we're talking about bike infrastructure, you wouldn't really think about trees too much.
Yeah, yeah.
But because we are trying to get the bike path off of the road to make that, you know, that full level of protection that we're trying to get to, some trees had to be removed, and that is something that, you know, residents, especially in the Forest City, will have issues with.
Yeah, I am definitely one to try to keep as many trees as possible.
Yeah, and I want to keep as many trees as possible, too. Like, when we did the work at the Harris Park Shoreline Restoration, there was a whole bunch of trees that were slated for removal. I went in with staff, yeah, I would go that way. I remember going out with staff in like the winter time, well, not just before the winter time, it was cold before the trees were actually to be removed. And the reason they do that is because they don't want any nesting species to create a nest and then remove the tree after. So they do it well before the actual construction, just to avoid that. So I remember I went with staff and we were really trying to save as many trees, and we did. We did save a lot of trees over at Harris Park, just going, going through and identifying the ones that absolutely had to be removed. And the ones that, that was just kind of more of a discretionary removal, I'd say.
Yeah.
But yeah, there's, there are a lot of things, and this comes with all infrastructure projects. There's a lot of things, according to the location of whatever it is that you're doing, that are also involved. Because, you know, there's a lot of requirements, and a lot of people have their wants, especially when it comes to the trees. We're trying to make safer infrastructure for all modes of transportation. But at the same time, we're trying to do that in a balanced approach, so we don't lose some of the assets that people, rightfully so, want to keep, and that we're proud of.
And what would you say, I want to get to transit in just a few moments, because I know that you have an awesome bus basically from your front door to work.
Almost from my front door.
Almost.
It's close. I would, I would agree with you. It's pretty much from my front door, yeah.
Yeah, almost door-to-door. About those trees, I wanted to kind of just put into perspective the difference between urban sprawl and the urban growth boundary expansion, et cetera, and when trees are then saved in a core, which is your ward, and the negative impact of sprawl versus, like, let's say we take a few trees down here. When, when you have a sprawl, oh, I guess we're going to go probably right here, right?
Yeah, you can go right on Dufferin. That will take you right down into Harris Park.
Yeah, we're going to go right, the number of, if we're just talking trees and nothing else, the number of trees that have to go bye-bye when you expand your urban growth boundary and it gets.
The numbers are in the thousands.
Exactly.
Or tens of thousands.
Yeah.
Yeah. There's lots of reasons why any municipality would want to avoid urban sprawl. I could tell you about the, the cost effectiveness of it. I could tell you about just the environmental impact of it.
Do we want to go straight, right, or left? Oh, yeah.
Love it.
Okay, now we get to go back.
Where's Vic?
Right back there.
We passed him?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Didn't even see him. I love how easy this is.
I know.
This is awesome.
So, quite literally, it's just.
Like, this is so fun.
E-bikes are transformational.
They are. They are transformational. There's so many people in the older age demographic that are buying e-bikes and using them and just loving life.
Yeah. And it, oh, it's just, it's so much fun. It really is. And it honestly, so it's a full second car replacement for us. So much so, like, I had the car, I was in Toronto for a big gig yesterday, and my, like, my wife, she just went over to, like, down Cheapside, like I always mentioned that. And she went to the cafe on her lunch, and like, she was just pedaling along, but we don't have a second car. How did she do that? Oh, well, yeah, she just biked, she hopped on and went, and she like, bikes to Dorchester, and e-bike makes it so much more tangible.
It makes it realistic.
Yes.
Like, you know, we only have one car, too. I have just a regular conventional bike, so I don't use it as much as I should. I, I usually will walk or take the bus if I have to, or we'll carpool with somebody. But yeah, I really got my eye on some type of e-bike, because, like, I could take this to a meeting and not show up super sweaty.
Exactly. Like, here's the other thing, is like, it's not cheating. When you're, if you were to drive, you're cheating, like, you're not getting a workout sitting there. Same thing, at least you're getting a mild workout, or you can choose to not sweat when you show up.
Yeah, like, the, this irregular type of bike, you'll have, you know, a specific type, type of user for that.
Yeah, yeah.
And, you know, there is some conventional uses out of it. But, you know, you really kind of narrow the population a lot for people who really want, who were just really, really for that. But if you really want to open that up, and this is why I agree with you, why it's so transformational, is because that conventional use, it just pretty much captures everybody.
And, yeah, like, no, you're not going to be biking to Toronto, but you may, like, yeah, like, you're already taking transit to work. But on those days where it's like, hey, I have a few other errands that I need to do that day, perfect, you bring your bike. And I know, because I've chatted with a few other councillors, that, yeah, you, you have the privilege of being able to bring your bike into the office.
That's right. Or you can park it anywhere at City Hall. Why don't we go left and follow the West London Dyke all the way to Cavendish?
Okay. So yeah, we'll go, we'll go left. Yeah, I guess I've been on your other side the whole time, because I'm used to doing the little swerve here and there, just to make drivers aware of our, our existence schnauzer over there. Shoot, was, oh, right, I was going to ask you about transit, but we're, we're not quite there yet, because now we're on the Dyke.
Yeah. Okay, well, we are on the West London Dyke here. This is a very good area for people to hang out, walk down the path here, ride your bike. Because we're centrally located, it does get a lot of traffic, especially during any type of special events that we might have. With this reconstruction, like, this is a good use of, of infrastructure dollars that are required, because, you know, obviously, we have some flooding issues, especially as the environment changes, risks of flooding does, does increase.
Yeah, the variableness of the Thames, especially right here, is so noticeable, because right now, it's super, super low, because we've been in a drought for a long time.
And a lot of that is also some water level control by the upper Thames as well. So, so we can control this with some of the dams.
Okay.
But flooding events, you know, they are increasing in frequency, and they are quite significant in the level that they have. So this London Dyke, this West London Dyke is built for a 250-year flooding event.
And what does that mean? A 250-year flooding event?
So that's an event, so basically, that flood level, they, they call it a 250-year flooding event, because the chances are, one in every 250 years, you'll have something like that. And it's based off of the flood of 1937.
Right, and that wiped out everything here, right?
All of these houses, which were here during that flood, were under. That's correct. So some of these houses, you know, I've, I've been in some of them. They, the owners or the residents of the houses have showed me, they still have staining. They, they kept some of the walls to show the staining there. And actually, some of the houses, one on Caruthers, you can actually see some of the flood line from the outside.
I did not know that. That, I thought those were like all rebuilt or something.
Well, they were.
But then, yeah.
But they're still there. So there is some houses there that, if you go, I think one on Mount Pleasant, you can actually see the foundation. You can see it's kind of listing a little bit. And it's apparently been listing like that for almost a hundred years.
And when you say listing, that's like the foundation.
I mean, it's not level. So you can see the outside is listing a little bit, but the inside, when you go in, the floors have been leveled. So there's some floating of the floors, so you can't really tell.
Yeah, the one-way here makes it easier, I think, to, you know, see what's coming. Because then you do one way, and then you cross this little island.
Makes it easy.
Then you can just focus on one direction traffic. I think I'm going to go. But yeah, you wanted to stop right over here and comment, so maybe we park right here. So, yes, if, here, actually, here, I can take this for a second.
So the West London Dyke reconstruction is going to go all the way around here, move all the way up along the north side of the river, up to Cavendish Park. And they're going to be extending the bike path on that as well. And that's just, you know, increasing the expansion and the connections. And then I wanted to point out the footpath bridge that's going to go from Cavendish to Evergreen. That's in the Mobility Master Plan. It's slated within the Mobility Master Plan. Right now, the timeframe seems to be eight to 10 years before we actually get that. I'm working with staff to see if there's any way we can do it a little bit quicker, because I know there's a lot of interest, especially with the community over there to make that connection. And it's within the interest of the city at large. It does create a connection, a safe connection, and one that's designated for, you know, those alternate formats of, of transportation.
Exactly. So that's right here. So we're, we would have come from the Dyke, which is over there. You can see the lampposts right there. And it goes over here, it's blocked right now, but it goes under the bridge and comes out right over here. And then you're saying that it's going to extend all over there, and then it, it won't come out over there?
It's going to go all the way down along the riverside up to Warren Cliff. It's going to dip under the Bridge of Warren Cliff and continue all the way till about Cavendish.
Cool.
That's very cool. And, and obviously, also that's slated is the work on the Queen's Bridge and the Kensington Bridge here as well. There is going to be a designated lane for biking.
Oh, is that, sorry, over on the other one?
Yeah, that one's Queen's. This one is Kensington.
Kensington.
Yeah. So both, both are slated for work. That one is going to be done first. They're going to be expanding the width of the bridge a little bit. The Rapid Transit Corridor for the East Leg is going to actually be going down that. It's going to be going all the way down to Warren Cliff, and then it's going to go north on Warren Cliff up to Western.
Wait, wait, so that road right there with the cars on it right now?
Yep.
Oh, so that's, that's the part of the LRT? Not LRT, BRT?
Yeah, RT.
RT. RT. What were the final little bits you wanted to chat about before we get back to the cafe to drop off the bikes?
Well, I think the final little bits that we have to chat about is really kind of what the movement around the city is going to look like in the future. And really to ensure that we are building the city appropriately for the types of modes of transportation that people will choose in the future as well.
Yeah.
So, you know, we have pretty robust engagement processes for the Mobility Master Plan, which is really supposed to capture all that. But in the end, you know, it does come to a council decision, it does come to available funds, it does come to just the resources at hand that we have. So, you know, just ensuring that we have kind of our, you know, hands on the pulse, our fingers on the pulse of, of the city and of what the future is going to look like. And just to make sure that we kind of hit some of our goals, you know, like our Climate Emergency Action Plan goals and our, you know, affordability and equity and inclusion goals. And just to make sure that we do build an infrastructure system that is for everybody.
Yeah.
For everybody in the city, so everybody has a chance and has the ability to get around and to do so in a way that, uh, kind of, you know, intersects and merges with those other priorities that we have, which is doable. We have the knowledge, um, of how to do it. Uh, we just need to kind of have that, that decision-making part, um, to be there and for the funds part as well.
Okay.
So that was fun. I almost lost myself.
Almost.
That was, that was super fun though. That was great. Yeah.
We can redo that if you want.
No, no, you get that in there.
Shows the realism, eh?
Yeah, yeah. All right. I have no idea what I was gonna even bother to say, but yeah, um, that, that was fun. Thanks for coming for a ride. Or should it be you thanking me for coming?
Well, I'm gonna thank you for letting me go on a ride with you, showing me around and me getting to show you around and just that discussion. That was a good discussion that we had, especially in the greatest ward of the city, Ward 13, where all the bike paths lead to. Um, you know, there's a lot of things here in the downtown core that you can come to do and enjoy yourself. Um, and there's lots of ways to get here as well. So I would say, I would challenge you to, to try them out and use them. Um, because it was a fun day. Today was a beautiful day that we had. We had, you know, great conversation. And I guess that would be my sign off. So thank you to Ben for agreeing to come out with me on this ride. And thank you to all the viewers who are watching this right now. Uh, I would really like you to come out and just check it out for yourself. Signing off, Dave Ferrer, Ward 13.
One final thing, you know, you can cut there or the downtown is like the beginning or the middle of the spoke here. So all of the trails that you were mentioning are all of the, uh, the spokes. The downtown is the center there.
That's right. The downtown is the hub of the entire city. The hub culturally, the hub economically, just the hub in funness. So follow those spokes to the center because this is where it's at.
There we go. All right.